Okay, good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, February 8th. Could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call the roll. Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee, or Clerk Robertson is not here. Treasure Kilmer.
Here.
And myself, present, obviously.
Who's, I'm sorry, who's gonna take the notes?
Yeah, we actually have Lynn Henry, and the meeting's also being recorded.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'll have the ability to take notes even after the meeting. With that, at this time, I'll ask for an approval of the regular agenda. Okay. Motion by Trustee Fike, supported by Trustee White. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Reardon.
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer.
Yes.
Robertson, myself, yes. Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please state your name and address for the record. If you have anybody that would like to make public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Rebecca Gerba-Bryn. I live at 604 West Overpass in Grand Blank City. I'm here tonight to introduce myself. I am running for Circuit Court Judge. As you may know, Judge Beagle is retiring at the end of this year, and so I wanted to come and introduce myself. Excuse me, sorry. I've been an assistant prosecutor here in Genesee County for over fifteen years now. I've handled everything from misdemeanors up through first-degree murder charges and appeals. I am currently assigned to the Child Abuse and Neglect Unit, which is a unit that Judge Beagle oversees, or that he sees those types of cases, so I have experience in that area. And I just wanted to come introduce myself, and I know I know some of you. I worked with Trustee White as opposing counsel. So, anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself, and if anybody has any questions, I will stick around after the meeting, and I'd love to talk to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Any other public comment? Okay. See no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Trustee Reardon, support by Trustee Hugo. Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Reardon.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, at this time, we will go to old business under our strategic plan, and we're going to have a discussion on our branding. Mr. Limbada, I guess.
This is an item on your strategic plan that you guys are well aware, there is a committee on the board that makes up the branding committee, and it's been meeting for quite some time since the last July. We made great progress, but this is one that, an area that Executive Board of Mr. Roberts has had it up for the township, and so I defer to her.
Okay, just to give you an update on where we're at with our branding, we are working on some street signs, so we have a concept.
For you. And mind you, it's just a concept, not necessarily exactly what we're going to have. This would be for the points of entry in the township.
There are about thirty-two different points of entry that we would be putting the signs at. We're also looking at some monument signs, some more larger signs for areas that are traveled more often, like maybe Saginaw and coming out of the city, coming into the township. We have discovered that as we've, our DPW, or Deputy DPW Director, excuse me, Greg Boggs and I went out and looked at several different points of entry in the township yesterday, and surprisingly, probably about half of our points of entry don't have signs at all. So, and we've brought that up before, that that's kind of, we need people to know that they're in Grand Blank Township. So, so there's about thirty-two signs. We're working with Action Traffic right now to design the signs. They did this concept design for us. We're also working with the Road Commission and making sure that we're installing them correctly and doing everything correctly. And also, Jeff Sears has been in contact with MDOT regarding, we had talked about doing on our overpasses something, so he's been in contact with them, so we're getting some different ideas there. Did you have any questions about where we're at?
Also, looking at the signage for out in front of the building here.
Yes, sorry, thank you. We just had a branding committee meeting, and we're headed in the right direction on our monument sign in front of the building.
I think you guys have done a great job on the website.
Thank you.
I thought that was, you know, really nice.
Thank you.
And that sign looks a little more updated from the seventeen...
Most percent on your side.
Well, and not only that, but surprisingly, there, I don't know how many different signs out there when you're coming into the township, and they all say something different, and it'll be nice to have one design.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Request that maybe we consider making it something a little more lively.
You don't think that's very lively?
You don't, honestly?
Okay. Well, we've already, part of it, we did design a logo, and so we're probably going to, you know, stay with the logo if there's different colors that you want to see, or, okay.
We're gonna be restricted by the Road Commission on what colors we can use.
Yeah.
That's one of the hurdles we have right now that we're gonna work on, but Road Commissions don't like things that look like advertising on their signed posts, so we gotta tread lightly.
I like maize and blue.
I'll go for that.
Okay.
Throw that out there. Just randomly pick two colors.
If we were a city, we could put whatever we wanted out there.
Yes, Mr. Fike. I love this sign.
I think that's cool-looking to me. I like the blue and green, I like the logo, I like the fact that it has a community in motion in it, which kinda says that, hey, you know, we're moving forward. I can't wait till we put something up, because the old ones are raggedy.
Right, yeah.
So I know this isn't a done deal. Now, when you, when the cars go past this, will it reflect so you can see it, you know?
It has a coating on the front of it, yes, reflective coating.
So you're looking at several different signs, or is this pretty much what you're zeroing in on for those signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have two different types of signs. These would be on metal posts, you know, at every entry point, and then we're also talking the monument signs for some significant areas and also in front of the building.
Yes.
And these are in our budget, and we can afford it?
These are in our budget, yes, sir.
We've actually been talking about doing this for quite a while, and Melissa, Ms. Roberts has actually put together the logo, and we went through that whole process, and it's taken quite a bit to get to this point. I would say she hasn't been working on it for years, but even previous boards have talked about it, but this is the furthest we've gotten with any of them, so I'm looking forward to getting something actually out there.
And on that green color that we've been told by the Road Commission.
Yeah. Yes, I can comment on that.
Can't hear you.
Wondering if we should publicly acknowledge it, but I'll bring it up, or do you want to, Melissa?
Go ahead.
Ms. Roberts got word from the Road Commission, I think, via our DPW Director, Jeff Sears, that they said that the signs have to be green, which would really limit how much color we could have on the sign. Right now, the signs are all white, and they said those would have to come down anyways. So we're gonna have to have some conversation with the Road Commission.
We reached out to the Road Commission, because the signs ultimately are their jurisdiction. It's in the right of way, so they have ultimate say on what we can and cannot do with them, basically. Whenever I inquired on the installation, the manager of the Traffic Engineering Department had indicated to me that the existing white signs that are up, she was actually relieved that we were looking at a project, because the existing white signs that are up aren't legal. We have in Michigan what we call the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code, which regulates everything, traffic signage, pavement markings, so on and so forth. According to the person I've been speaking with, the signs that this is, it's an informational sign, it's not a traffic sign, it doesn't regulate traffic at all, it's not like a stop sign or a speed limit sign. Those types of signs have to be a green background with white printing, it still had the logo on it, but according to her, that's her interpretation of the code. I'm doing some more research myself to see if there's ways around that loopholes. This is a very attractive sign. I think it stands out, I think it looks modern, and it's just different, and that's what we are, we're different in Genesee County. So hopefully, we can find a loophole, or, you know, hopefully, we can talk to the right people at the Road Commission and garner some support for these particular signs.
David, I mean, isn't that something that we could, if they're not sure, then it's open for interpretation.
I agree. We're not gonna get that maize and blue in there, but I think we can off the...
Well, it's just a thought, I was just, two random colors.
Waterford, Waterford signs are blue. I don't know about the maize isn't there, but the blue is, the background is blue for Waterford, so...
Well, like Scott had indicated, being a township, we don't have any control over it. If we were a city, we put up our own signs, we do what we please. If you went into the city of Grand Blank, they might have different signage than we do, because they're the ones that are liable for it. In our case, the Road Commission is liable for whatever we put up, but again, hopefully there's a loophole we can find, or maybe, you know, they'll be flexible with us in the end.
I would say a good argument would be that in the summer, if you make it green on white, it's not gonna show up hardly at all.
Well, we want it to stand out from the rest of the traffic signs in other communities. We'll take some pictures, Waterford, I'm down there regularly, it's, they're blue, so we'll work on that.
Sure, absolutely.
But I wanna see if we can't get this approved, and anything else on branding, Ms. Roberts?
Just that Action Traffic has been wonderful to work with. They have talked to us about any kind of changes that we want to make, and they will make it look nice, whatever parameters we have to work with. There's also a possibility that they may be donating the signs to Grand Blank Township, and that would be pretty incredible, too, as a goodwill gesture to the township. So they've been really incredible, they do a lot of work, signage work all over the place, so it's been great.
They're Grand Blank Township business.
Yes, they are.
We might check with them on what they do for other communities as far as signs like this, because they probably are familiar with who has green signs and who doesn't, so...
Right.
Okay, thank you very much, Melissa, nice job. Anything else, Mr. Limbada, on strategic plan?
Nope, that's the only we're updating the board on this evening.
Okay. With that, under new business, Item A, the board will consider a motion to declare two Cummins trailer-mounted generator surplus equipment and authorize Township Administration to sell them to the Genesee County Drain Commission for $50,000 each. Mr. Sears?
Thank you, Scott. So this past summer, we undertook a project to install emergency standby generators at both of our emergency wellhouses. So in the past, we've had two trailer-mounted generators that we have to store here and then take out to the wellhouses if we ever need them. Now, we have natural gas generators out there, they're ready on demand. What we're asking tonight is for the board to declare the old generator surplus equipment so we can sell them. We happen to know that the Genesee County Drain Commissioner is looking for generators. They've offered $50,000 each, which is just a couple thousand dollars away from our original investment that we made fifteen years ago or more, so I think we're doing pretty good in this. I mean, it takes a good chunk also out of our investment of the new generators. So the motion is to declare the two generators surplus, and then to authorize the township to sell them to the Drain Commission for $50,000 each.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, it's important. Any discussion? Not as quick as this is, Ms. Roberts, and yet, but...
Just out of curiosity, David, could this be just a general yes/no?
I think this motion doesn't need to be roll called, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna break your rhythm on that. The next two coming up, I mean, so I think you could do this one, just general voice votes, same with the second, and then the next two, though, will need roll calls.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Item B, the board will consider a motion to approve the annual renewal of Infocare Asset Management Suite for $22,405, and authorize Township Superintendent to execute all related documents. Mr. Sears?
So this is just a general housekeeping item, this is some software we use for asset management in the DPW. We do our water and sewer modeling with it, so we keep track of capacity, pipe conditions, so on and so forth. The annual renewal is $22,405, which is about 3% higher than last year, which is a common increase for these types of programs.
Questions for Director Sears? Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay. Ms. Hugo makes the motion, supported by Trustee Reardon. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, the board will consider a motion to approve two new zoning districts, Flexible Development 1 and 2. We have Mr. Smith here from Planning Zoning.
Yes, good evening. So in your packets, you have a memorandum dated February 4, 2020, from Jill Bame, from Giffords Webster. It's a very lengthy memo with all of the new information that we want to implement in Flex 1 and Flex 2, but I'll give you kind of a brief overview. The Planning Commission, we're working on a series of zoning amendments as implementation strategies for the current master plan. One of those items carried over from the previous master plan is the creation of the flexible development districts. Planning Commission discussed the background and outlined this November, and considered ordinance language at the January 6, 2020 meeting. Public hearing was held on February 3, 2022, at the Planning Commission meeting. No public comments were offered, and the item was approved 6 to 1. The adoption of these amendments does not change the zoning on any of the properties in the township. Property owners may petition the township for rezoning as desired. The remainder of this memo is provided as background. If you see in your map, there's very few areas in the township that will be utilized for this Flexible 1 and Flexible 2, with the majority of them concentrated on the northwest quadrant, but there is one, only about one Flexible 2 location, and that's on Dort Highway just south of Tri Park. And the Flexible 1 has residential and light commercial and office involved in it. Flexible 2 is light commercial and light industrial. So there's two distinctions, two different zoning districts that we want to have approved going forward.
Okay, Mr. Limbada?
Jeremy, I think it's important to note that we've had flexible, excuse me, the flexible zoning districts in our master plan going back to 2000...
Twelve, I believe, is what the original date was.
But they were never clearly defined. What you're being asked tonight is really those definitions. So while we've had the zoning designation in our master plan maps, including the future land use map that this board approved last year, and some of those districts were expanded or moved, but we definitely didn't have the definitions together. This allows us to finally move forward, why it's important, and we've had them, we've been, we were trying to get this done even before the master plan, future land use map was adopted, but it took a while longer, because we wanted to make sure we got it right.
Thank you.
I think, you know, this board had some concerns when we first were seated in last November, and took a look at the master plan that was being presented, and we said, hey, let's slow this train down a little bit, we want to make some changes. The one area that we had the most concern on, I think, was around the new Dort extension and Cook Road, and concerned about what kind of development can take place there, and I think the Flex 1 and Flex 2 definitions help alleviate the concerns there. You know, while it allows for development, it also allows for discretion amongst the board and the Planning Commission to be able to decide what kinds of things are a fit and what isn't. And the same with along Holly Road, where we have that as well, that allows for some discretion in that area as well.
Gives more flexibility for development, hence the flexible development designation.
Right. Yes, Mr. White?
Will this make redeveloping, if we're gonna focus on the Saginaw corridor, is this going to make it easier?
Yes, yes, mhm. More different kinds of businesses will be allowed, as opposed to just the small office, you know, there'll be a lot more different items that'll be allowed to be built there.
The other question I have is, and I read the memo, I'm a little, I guess, confused on how this interacts with the traditional PUD stuff. Could you just say a little bit about that?
What?
The planned unit development?
Mhm.
Is this just replacing that, or is this just an addition essentially to it in certain areas to make it easier to do?
Right, so this is an addition, so as our normal zoning designations that we have, like R1, R2, R4, now on the zoning map, the actual zoning map and the future land use map, we'll have another designation on top of the PUD that'll be Flex 1 and Flex 2, with, that goes with the setbacks and things that are already built in our zoning ordinance book that you guys all have. It'll have another distinction, another two pages per zoning ordinance, so that way there's all the setbacks, the planned permitted uses, and the special land uses as well.
Dr. Reardon?
Just, so, this doesn't, if we change the zoning, we heard a lot of people didn't want a gas station or a truck stop in the Dort Highway area. This, how does that affect that?
Those were removed per the Planning Commission's requests, so no, in these two zoning districts, no gas stations will be allowed, period.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion or questions or concerns?
Thank you.
All I'll say is, on your map, I, yeah, it was a bit of an eye test for me with all the colors, and I didn't know what all that meant, you know? But I think anything to make it easier for people to come in and do business in our township is wise.
Yes.
So I think this sounds good to me.
Yeah, makes my job a lot easier, too, so I can, when I have these pre-meetings with all the new applicants that could come in, it makes, what they say, what can we build here? It gives, it expands that list by far.
Okay. And one of the things we're trying to do is have some mixed-use type developments, and whether it's on Saginaw Street or wherever, it lends itself to being able to do that a little bit easier, too.
Yes.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to, okay. Ms. Hugo? Supported by Dr. Reardon, okay. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Reardon?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, Item D, the board will consider a motion to approve zoning change case number 670 for the Wiseman Realty LLC for parcel 12-22-300-005, from office service to Flex 1, Flexible Development 1. Mr. Smith?
So as you just approved, this is our first case going from office to Flexible 1 development. We feel that this is a better change and a better use for that than the office that it's been zoned for, Mr. Limbada, decades, I would say. So this gives us the flexibility to put in something new, and we have an applicant here today that's asking to have it rezoned for a future car dealership. So we already have movement on this, so I'm glad that you guys approved everything today, so I appreciate that. So this is for the Wiseman Realty LLC. The Township Board and the Planning Commission adopted the master plan and future land use map in September of 2021. This request is consistent with the newly adopted master plan and the future land use map, and with the zoning ordinance that you just approved just a minute ago. As I said before, it would be allow, anything that is allowed in Flex 1, but as I just stated, it's going to be, we do know what it is gonna be, is a future car dealership. And the applicants are here today to speak if you have any questions. This property fronts on Holly Road, is a major thoroughfare with a center turn lane. If you're familiar with the area, there's already a car, two car dealerships on Holly Road in this same general area. The zoning for the surrounding districts are office service for the northeast and south, and to the west is a manufactured housing park. The Planning and Zoning Department would support a recommendation for approval due to the requested zoning being compatible with the surrounding land uses, and the future land use map recommends for Flex 1 zoning at this location.
Is everybody familiar with where that property is?
Yeah, is it, are the railroad tracks right there in the back?
To the west.
Right.
Yep, if you look at your map that's included in your packet, you've got, on the west side, you've got the railroad tracks.
Kind of a pie-shaped piece of land?
Correct, and it dead ends into, is that Cook, Cook Road at the south, correct? Yep. McCannish is north, yeah, McCannish is to the north, but I believe Cook is to the south, correct?
Yep. It is a challenging parcel, so when you look at it, the reason it's been for sale for a long time is exactly what Trustee Fike said, you got railroad tracks running across the entire backside of this parcel. It does narrow down into nothing at the end before the tracks. It is a challenging parcel, but I think it's a perfect parcel for the suggested use with the applicants.
Questions? Aplicant care to say anything? No, you don't have to, you don't, you're not compelled to.
Ant Parker from Simon Figure and Parker, counsel for Wiseman Realty, 5206 Gateway, Center Flint. We can present as much or as little as you want, but mostly, we're here to answer any questions. As most of you know, Randy and Chris, who are both here Wise, are the new owners of the BMW Mercedes dealership just right down the block from this. They know they need to get additional space and move one of their franchises off that, because that parcel is a little too crowded right now, so that's why we're here. We're glad that we've had such response from the township so far, and as you can see, and if you're familiar with any of the Wise dealerships around the county, they keep things in perfect shape, and you guys will be very proud of this development. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you want to have any questions?
Just happy to have the Wise folks in Grand Blank Township. You know, I guess you could go anywhere, and happy that you purchased the dealership and that it's staying local, these are local folks, and wish you well in this new venture.
Yes, we're very thankful you chose Grand Blank Township. Okay, somebody care to make that motion? Okay, Fike, supported by Mr. White. Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we look forward to your senior development.
Sure will be bad, great. Can we start moving dirt tomorrow?
Okay, future agenda items, anything that, Mr. Limbada, what do you think we want to have next for strategic plan issues?
I mean, my suggestion would be that at least one of the items be that we don't I mean, my suggestion would be that at least one of the items be that we don't lose focus on the north end, and we discuss what we're doing with the north end and any progress that we've made. And then, at the same time, I believe we should have a conversation about the Building Committee and exactly where we're at with the Fire Department and DPW new facilities being built out.
Okay. With that, go to board reports. Hugo, anything with Planning Commission?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Yes. Sure, absolutely.
I've been working with Ms. Bame regarding some zoning amendments. I gave her a list of about 26 to 30 different things that we're gonna be looking at in the next coming months, and then you guys will have to be the final approval leg of that as well. A lot of it's minuscule things, cleanup things that I've seen since in my short time here, but it's, there's some things that need to be taken care of for ease of approval and pushing things along through the Planning Commission and things of that sort. One of the things that we're also gonna be looking at is the accessory vehicles zoning ordinance, so I know that's a sticking point with the previous board, this one, and passports too, but I have a feeling that my proposals will be easier for our code enforcement division to enforce that ordinance. They're chasing their tails at this point with that, and 48 hours, in my opinion, is not long enough. So, we have other things that we're, we should be focusing on as far as code enforcement, the north end, one of those, but I feel grass and blight is more important that they should be looking at as opposed to recreational vehicles that come and go quite frequently. So, just a heads up on that.
What do you think, Mr. Smith?
We're gonna be proposing language hopefully in March to the Planning Commission for a few. I don't know how many we're going to push through at one time. There's gonna be quite a few, like I said, so it could be a couple months. I'm hoping to have the majority of them done before code enforcement starts, in April or May is when they start picking up, so I'm hoping to have a number of them finished by then.
It might be good to take it in bite-sized pieces rather than doing all of them.
That was our, Jill and I's consensus as well.
Right.
Yes.
So that we can ponder.
Yes.
A few at a time and give it certain thought.
Yep.
Some of them are going to require some discussion.
And with the recreational vehicle one, I have a feeling that, that there's gonna be a couple different scenarios that we're gonna wanna discuss, so I may bring that before you all, to see your take on it, before we take it to the Planning Commission and get kind of a consensus on your thoughts, too, so.
Would, so if you did bring that to us in March, the recreational vehicle, and we were able to move that through, let's say, by April, it takes a couple of months to make it effective, or?
It'll be almost, I mean, seven days, correct? I mean, after it's approved?
Yeah, once, so the Planning Commission will have a public hearing on it, and then it'll come to you. And by the way, the Wise case was at Planning Commission on Thursday, so that can happen pretty quickly.
Right.
And then you're exactly right, Jeremy, seven days after publication, it becomes law.
So, we could possibly have something on that for the summer.
Could, I'm, that's my, my hope and my, my wish, but with all the other things that we have going on and the other ordinances that we wanna get going, that's, it's a high priority, but I know it's gonna be a sticking point with the public as well, so we're, we're gonna do our due diligence on it before we just kinda throw it out there.
Yeah, so I, I think doing them in small pieces would.
Yep.
Keep all of our board sane and staff, too.
Yes.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. White, anything with zoning Board of Appeals?
February meeting has also been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Fike, anything with Metro Alliance?
Yes, we did have a meeting, and at this past meeting, it wasn't that big of a deal, but they said the next month, they're gonna reveal $50 million in projects, road projects for Genesee County.
Wow.
And that they'd sent along, you know, what they're thinking about. And I don't know whether you have a heads up on that or not, you do. So, you know, you've already submitted stuff to it.
We do, and we had a meeting two days ago at the Road Commission, so we've got a list of projects that have been approved.
There you go. Why did we know he'd know this? So, we'll, whenever that list is made available, we'll pass it along.
Very good. Dr. Reardon, anything?
Good.
Kilmer?
We're good.
That's it?
We're good.
Okay. I don't have anything other than, I had the 911 Executive Committee meeting today. We did receive an attorney opinion right before the meeting. What happened was the 911 Consortium Council sought outside opinion, and that was actually delivered today just prior to the meeting. I will forward that, I didn't have the chance to get it out to all of you yet, but I will tonight. I'll leave it for Mr. Laddie and Mr. Limbada to explain what they think it means, but we're actually, I'll let Mr. Limbada describe, but we have hired a separate counsel just to give us a written opinion with regard to where we stand with 911 and what our liability could be. I guess the summary of the attorney's written opinion is, they don't feel like we have, the municipalities don't have liability, but, you know, as somebody mentioned, we could get 20 attorneys in a room and get 20 different opinions, so I'm looking forward to seeing a couple more opinions, and I know, I know the rest of the board, the 911 Consortium Board is looking forward to those opinions, too, so. Mr. White?
Are we going into closed session again? I know we talked last week on a couple issues, and I didn't know.
I'm gonna make that request.
Really think a request, okay.
Yep. For, to discuss merit increases based upon the performance evaluations of the non-represented employees.
Okay. I don't have anything else, but, Mr. Laddie, do you have anything before we go?
No, sir, I do not.
Mr. Limbada?
Just a quick update, you guys, we're, we're working on some different grants, and again, Executive Coordinator Melissa Roberts is heading this up, working with Fire Department and Police Department to look at some potential opportunities to get some money to assist us in our recruiting and training efforts for our police and fire, so there's a real good possibility. Right now, we're in a unique situation. There's a lot of money floating around, you know, from the feds, and while your grandchildren's grandchildren may be responsible for paying it back one day, if the money's out there, we feel like we should make every effort to at least get our fair share of it, and some good can come out of it. And I, I think that we've got some opportunities here that, that could help us in those recruiting efforts. We've had that conversation, and Dr. Reardon's well aware of the challenges that we have in recruiting for our police department especially. We're, we're trying to come up, think outside of the box, and come up with some creative ways to do that, and if we can help at least partially fund that through some grants, it's a good opportunity for the Grand Blank Township.
Okay, so, somebody care to make the motion to go into executive session to discuss? Mr. Limbada, was employee?
Yeah, so, we've completed the performance evaluations of all the non-represented employees, and I need to just have a discussion with the board about potential merit increases for those employees, where they fit in with the budget, and based upon those performance evaluations, and I'd like to do that in a closed session if the board agrees.
Like to make that motion to go into closed session, discuss. Is there a support for that? Mr. White? All's in favor?
Oh, no, they're.
Do I have to? Yeah. Believe me, I got my notes here telling my marching orders right here. Um, Trusty Hugo?
Yes.
Trusty Fike?
Yes.
Trusty Reardon?
Yes.
Trusty White?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we're going into closed session at 7:40 PM.